Vice President Lizer here. Thank you for joining us on this COVID-19 Town Hall update. Today is Wednesday, April 21st. So it's good that you can be here with us on this update. Again, we update with information, new data and new developments. And there's certainly a lot going on right now as we plan for a lot of events and whatnot. But first, as we always do, let us open up with prayer. I'll pass it on to our President Jonathan Nez, and we'll receive his updates. And I'll give mine accordingly as well. So, Amen, God. Only God, we give you great praise this morning. We thank you for waking us up, Lord. There's a new day, new vision, new attempts, and new endeavors, Lord Father, to bring you glory. I pray that we can operate in your great wisdom, Lord. We pray for your knowledge, Lord, that bless the nation. Father, as we receive updates, as we give new information out to the people all across the Neta, this land that you've given us, Creator God, we thank you. We ask again your blessing on the people. Bring healing, your healing, Lord, to the land and to the people. Father, we pray for those that are mourning, Lord. We pray for families that have lost loved ones, Lord. Strengthen them, gird them up, Lord Father. And, Lord, show them favor and mercy, your great mercy. So we thank you again on this update, Town Hall, Lord Father. I pray that the wisdom that is used by our health professionals, Lord, be granted and given to the people all across the land, that they may be blessed and they run with it. So, Father, give us wisdom and protect all those, Lord, that are helping our frontline, our nurses, our doctors, our EMTs, our public safety, on and on, Lord, our health, our hospital administrators, Lord Father, be with each one and their families, Lord, as they provide service and great care to the people on which they serve, which they love. We thank them for their sacrifice, Lord, but you ultimately, Lord, give us the ability and the strength, and you've gifted us with talents, Lord Father, which we honor you and we honor and serve those, Lord Father, in which you called us to. In Jesus' name we pray, Father. Thank you. Amen. And amen. So, as I've said earlier on this Wednesday, April 21st Town Hall update, we appreciate our President and his great leadership. And he's got some exciting news in which to tell you, and it's all unfolding before our eyes. So, ladies and gentlemen, the President of the Navajo Nation, Jonathan Nez, take it away, sir.
Thank you, Vice President, for the prayer and amen to that. And many of you that have started your day with prayer, praying for yourself, your family, for your leaders, for your nation, we appreciate that. So, Amen. And we thank you for watching live this morning from all over the place. Royne Rock, North Carolina. Melissa, thank you for joining us all across the country and all over the world. I know that we didn't have our Town Hall yesterday, Tuesday. Usually Tuesdays and Thursdays, we have our update meetings on COVID-19. As you know, yesterday, or if you don't know, you're wondering why the flags were half-staffed. We were honoring a former council delegate, Nelson Begay. And we attended the funeral yesterday and presented the Navajo Nation flag and the proclamation to Nelson's wife, Linda, and her children. So we asked for prayers for the family. And Nelson has been a great advocate for the Navajo people, was elected five times to the Navajo Nation Council. And I got the honor to serve with him, coming in as a young delegate, giving me guidance as well, and being a part of the Budget and Finance Committee with him. A lot of great things we worked on for the Navajo people. And so we honor him and we thank the family for the many years of their sacrifice, of their husband, their father, uncle, and their grandfather, their Nully. And on behalf of the Navajo people, we thank the family for them, for their dedication. And so that was why we didn't have a meeting yesterday. And today, Wednesday, we like to give you an update. And we also want to say Happy Administrative Professionals Day. We do have a proclamation that was Vice President and I signed and recognizing our professionals, Navajo Nation Administrative Professionals Day is hereby proclaimed today, April 21st, 2021. And in honor and appreciation of all who served in many capacities throughout our communities on the Navajo Nation. Many really stepped up during the pandemic as well. And we thank each and every one of you, and of course, and their line workers, their warriors that also supported their administrators and continue to support their administrators. You know, there's a big responsibility on each and every one of you to empower our employees throughout the Navajo Nation. So to the employees, we also thank you for the hard work that you are doing on behalf of our Navajo citizens. And we'll go to the new PowerPoint. If you could put that PowerPoint slide up. You know, yesterday, we had an update from the Navajo Department of Health and also from the epidemiology team, the Epidemiology Center. And yesterday's updates were 30,380. We're not going to be putting that up today. So there was nine new cases of COVID-19 in 24 hours. Total confirmed deaths, 1,262 as of today. No deaths in 24 hours. So that's 10 days straight. So praise God for that. Thank you to our Creator for answering our prayers, 10 days of no deaths. And that is the work that each and every one of you have done throughout this pandemic. I know that some people are getting itchy to get out and get back to normal. But, you know, you hear stories all over the world of outbreaks happening. If you want to Google, those of you that are on social media can Google. Go Google Brazil. Brazil is having an influx, a really dire situation there in COVID cases in other places around the world. And of course, we think we're safe here, but there's international travel. And you got migrants coming from South America into the United States. And where Arizona and New Mexico are border states. So we have to keep our eyes on those situations as people are coming in and may have the virus. That's why we're being very cautious here on the Navajo Nation. And I appreciate, you know, I've been out there in the communities, people thanking the Navajo Nation, the staff, the leadership for their hard work and pushing back on the virus, you know. Of course, there's going to be some people that disagree. Probably most of them don't even live on the Navajo Nation. But we here that live on the Navajo Nation have experienced and have seen firsthand how hard the Navajo Nation has been hit due to this pandemic. So the vaccination that is occurring as well in our communities. And if you bring up the slide comparing the U.S. numbers and the Navajo Nation, Eli, we show this slide a lot. The brown line is the Navajo Nation and the darker line is the United States of America. And you can see the increase in cases of COVID-19 in various parts of the United States of America. And we are monitoring that and we're very cautious. I know some of our vendors are wanting our visitors to come in. We don't know where these visitors are coming from. And we want to keep our people safe, right? And of course, we understand that people do make a living. And we're looking forward to getting some of that American Rescue Plan Act monies to our small businesses. There's also another round of CARES Act funds. And don't mix it up too. You know, some people are mixing it up, saying, well, another round of CARES Act. There was an amount of CARES Act that was frozen because it was going to the Alaska Native Corporation. The courts froze that money. Now they're saying that the Alaska Native corporations are not to receive those monies. And so that remaining amount should go to the tribe. So there's going to be another, an additional amount of money through the CARES Act that was last year's. And we're recommending that those monies go to the businesses that were not able to turn in their applications in time because, you know, there was a change in timelines here. And the council changed the timeline from another one. And so a lot of confusion. So some of our businesses weren't able to apply for the Economic Relief Fund. So we want to use that hardship dollars, I'm sorry, the CARES Act funds for that. And then also, some of the people didn't get the hardship funds. You know, people are saying some of the chapters didn't turn in their paperwork, they lost paperwork. You know, of course, we don't know. Office of the Controller administers the hardship funds. And we just don't know how the information was received and got to that office. But those that didn't receive hardship funds, you know, there's, we want to recommend that this additional CARES Act fund go to those that didn't get support, all right? So that will take care of businesses that didn't apply in hardship, and people that wanted some support that didn't get their application in time. But now the American Rescue Plan Act monies would go to infrastructure, waterline, electricity, broadband, telecommunications. Some of these projects weren't complete because, again, moving around these timelines. And we want to finish, we made some obligations. We want to make sure Navajo follows through on some of those obligations. So that would be a priority first, at least the first priority of what we're recommending, that we finish off those projects that didn't get complete, infrastructure projects that, again, are complete under the CARES Act, put it as a priority under the American Rescue Plan Act. Anyway, if you go back, if you go to the chart, the PowerPoint, you can see the dark is the U.S. and the brown is the Navajo Nation. You could see the increase in cases towards the far right of cases here throughout the country. And you could see a rise. And you could see on the U.S. side, I'm sorry, the Navajo Nation side, the brown one, how it's flat, flattening out. And again, we thank the Creator, we thank God for helping us through this pandemic. And we see some really low numbers. If you go to the next slide, Eli, and, you know, we also announced recently that the Hantavirus, there was a case that was identified by the Navajo Department of Health and the Epidemiology Center, a Navajo resident who contracted the virus, Hantavirus. So that's another thing, you know, spring coming, spring cleaning, trash pickups happening, you know, same protocols as COVID-19. Wear your mask, social distance. Wear, you know, wear gloves, wash your hands, same protocols. I mean, we should be able to push back on Hantavirus as well. And as you all know, scientists have said it comes from the deer mice dropping. So inhaling that, you can catch this Hantavirus. So when you're spring cleaning, you know, just be very careful, but follow the same protocols. Wear your mask, wear gloves, be clean, use Clorox, and you should be safe. If you look at the PowerPoint, you see Navajo Nation is the yellow way at the bottom of the list. The next one is Arizona. Above Arizona is New Mexico. Above New Mexico is Utah. And look at Colorado. So we're monitoring Colorado. Colorado has seen an increase in cases. And those are states all around us. So again, this is the reason why we're slowly, gradually reopening. We don't want to open everything up and we see our rise in cases again. There's a lot of lessons learned here. And we just ask for your patience and your consideration. And if you feel like this is a hoax, then I don't know what you can do. Talk to the families who've lost loved ones. Over 1,200 families. It's real. And it shouldn't be about politics. It shouldn't be about, oh, I'm being told to restrict my freedoms, you know. It's about the greater good. It's not about ourselves. It's about our families and our communities and our Navajo Nation. That's how you should look at it. That's how we were taught as Navajos. Those of you that are thinking of yourselves, maybe you didn't get that teaching. And we want to share that teaching with you because it's all about the greater good here on Navajo. It's about helping our neighbors, helping our nation as a whole. Six variants thus far has been identified here on the Navajo Nation. Six cases, I'm sorry, six cases of the variant. One, the U.K. variant was identified in the western part of the Navajo Nation. An elderly individual caught the virus, U.K. variant, and had both shots and still caught it. So there's a thought out there that if I get the shot... had both shots and still caught it. So there's a, there's a thought out there that if I get the shots, I'm not going to catch it. No, you still can catch it. But you know what? We can learn a lot about this case. And if you get the, the two vaccines, you know, this individual, this elderly individual was checked into the hospital, cleared, uh, and is recovered. And didn't get sick as bad. You know, just imagine if, if that individual didn't have the vaccine, probably would have been a lot worse as the public health professionals have said. So getting the vaccine actually pushes back on the virus, but if you do catch it, you don't get as sick as, uh, you know, as severe as before. So it is recommended, highly recommended you get vaccine. I know the Johnson and Johnson is not being offered no more. Pfizer and Moderna are still available. So we ask that you consider that. The other variants we have, uh, uh, the, the California, okay, the, the UK variant is all over the country, all fifty states. The California variant is prevalent here in the southwest, in the southwest of the United States. And so it's starting to rise here around us. And there have been five cases now, uh, that have been identified, uh, on the Navajo Nation. Uh, we got one in Gallup Indian Medical Center Service Unit area, you know, that's a big service unit area. And we also have one in the Chinley or the Central Service Unit area. And then we have, uh, three up in the northern Navajo Medical Center, uh, service area. And you know, those are most likely because of the Colorado cases, Colorado, uh, rises in cases there. And we just ask that people be careful when they're going into border towns. Uh, I want to again, say thank you to our, um, contact tracers. Contact tracers are very, very important. And they have isolated these incidents. They made sure that didn't spread. And that's why I appreciate the Navajo people being, uh, honest and answering the contact tracers questions. Remember they have identification. Don't, um, give out information to folks that don't verify themselves as contact tracers as well. But contact tracers are very important to keeping these numbers way down. If you look at the next slide here, it, it shows the vaccination summary. And, uh, the vaccination compared to the United States and, uh, commend the Navajo people, but we can do better. We can improve this. So if there are family and friends uh, that are not wanting to get this, tell them it's for your family, it's for your community. If they haven't been vaccinated, you know, encourage them. Um, we want to get up to seventy five percent of our Navajo people, residents, Navajo people that live on the Navajo Nation. Seventy five percent vaccinated and then we can reopen the Navajo Nation to our visitors. Cause that plays a factor on keeping the counts low, both the, uh, the COVID nineteen positive numbers and also our deaths. If you look at the PowerPoint there, uh, US two hundred and sixty four million plus have been doses have been given out to the jurisdictions. Those that have been given administered two hundred and nine million plus. Number of people that are received two doses fully vaccinated, eighty four million plus. So percent fully vaccinated throughout the country, twenty five point four percent. Now, uh, and, and percent administered, seventy nine percent. Now look at the Navajo Nation. Total doses, uh, that were given to the Navajo Nation. Two hundred and forty six thousand four hundred and sixty five have come to the Navajo Nation. Two hundred and fourteen thousand three hundred and nine have been given. And that's, uh, eighty seven percent of what we receive gone into the arms of our Navajo people. Ninety three thousand eight hundred and thirteen have been fully vaccinated, two doses, that's forty four percent. Now, this is, uh, increasing as we speak, you know, uh, last evening, I, I heard uh, even as high as fifty two percent, half of our Navajo population being fully vaccinated. The reason why it's difficult to, to get updates is that, you know, a lot of our Navajo people that don't live on the Navajo Nation came home, got their vaccine and then they went back to where they live off the Navajo Nation. And so we're going through that data. And so what I said about seventy five percent, that I mean that those are the individuals who live on the Navajo Nation. So the, it's fluctuating now. If we were, uh, just a, a general, uh, estimation, we might be as far as sixty five to sixty five percent or even more of our Navajo residents, Navajo people living on the Navajo Nation land that have been fully vaccinated. But we are, uh, getting updates. So I'm, we're shooting for seventy five percent and seventy five percent should be a goal for all of us. Uh, to reopen the Navajo Nation to our visitors because we'll be vaccinated. And keep in mind, uh, there are scientists and healthcare professionals that are saying, well, it only lasts for six months. Does that mean they have to have a booster shot? Afterwards, uh, you know, those are items that we're monitoring as well, uh, news that we're giving. So based on, uh, our low numbers and you all have been very diligent about following through on this protocol. So what we're going to be announcing today for Navajo Nation residents, for the Navajo Nation people, we're going to be going from orange to yellow status, uh, starting next Monday. And what does that mean? We're taking baby steps or small steps to reopening. So on Monday, what we're going to be, uh, doing is restaurants and dining facilities. Uh, indoor dining will reopen to twenty five percent capacity. Uh, drive through is still there, but we're going to open slowly the indoor dining at twenty five percent. Navajo Nation parks will reopen to Navajo Nation residents and we need help there. How are we going to monitor that? We need your help. You know, you just say respectfully to visitors that we're not fully open yet. We're doing this because everyone around the country knows how hard Navajo was hit. And if we have visitors listening in on this discussion, I just ask for your patience and your, uh, consideration. Uh, that Navajo, you know, Navajo has been hit hard. So we're just focusing right now on our Navajo citizens and I ask for your patience. We will reopen. And we will be reopening to our, our Navajo, uh, people who live off the nation as well as our visitors. But we are doing this very slowly and we just ask, uh, our visitors and our friends to please keep that in, in consideration. We did get hit hard and we, we just saying that respectfully. Uh, and so parks, uh, and travel parks will reopen, uh, to our Navajo residents and there will be some guidelines that will follow as well. Uh, our casinos are still open to Navajo citizens that will go from twenty five percent to fifty percent. Uh, and there will also be some announcements on the gaming as well. Uh, gatherings, um, for, there'll be an increase in, in drive up of vehicles, uh, including traditional gatherings, uh, churches and businesses will go from twenty five percent to fifty percent occupancy. Uh, we are working on graduation guidelines. We need your help, students and family members. We don't know what the future holds into May. We're praying and if these cases don't rise, we are open to allowing uh, graduations to take place, but of course it's going to have to follow some very strict guidelines. And, uh, I know some of you are working on those guidelines and, uh, we are going to be uh, talking about that for the next one. So it's not a done deal yet. We're going to be talking about it this whole week with the healthcare professionals, developing and to see how the guidelines are. Now if the cases start rising, a lot of these will go away. So it's really up to all of us here on the Navajo Nation. And you're doing such an outstanding job. Let's continue to do that as we go into the end of April and into May as well. So those will be the new public health emergency orders that will be announced this week. Well, I guess I announced it, but it'll be solidified into a public health emergency order for the Navajo people. So good job. It's not, we're, we're not celebrating yet, you know, the pandemic's still here. We got to continue to wear our masks, social distance, wash your hands, use hand sanitizer and stay at home as much as we can. Yes, the stay at home order and the, um, uh, the, uh, stay at home order and the, um, gosh, what was the other term that they were using? Uh, will stay in effect, um, of course, because we're encouraging that the safest place to be right now is at home. So that will stay in place, shelter in place. That was the word, the, the term I was trying to remember. Shelter in place, stay at home continues into at least the next week and we'll be doing a lot more of these meetings. And, and keep in mind, ladies and gentlemen, that we, we have these meetings with public health experts. It's not just, you know, things that will come out of the blue. We're doing this safely, ladies and gentlemen, safely. Every one of us here have been directly impacted by this virus. We know somebody who got sick. Maybe that person is still sick. Uh, they're still feeling the effects of what they went through. We've lost loved ones. I've lost loved ones. And to honor their memory, to honor them, let's do this together slowly and carefully uh, for all of us here on the Navajo Nation. All right. And then lastly, uh, I think it's the, the buzz in here on the Navajo Nation that are, uh, the First Lady of the United States of America is coming to the Navajo Nation. Uh, and, uh, you know, again, we got some very strict protocols on our end and also on the end of the White House. So, you know, we're, these, these meetings are not going to be, uh, public physically, you know, you can't come to Window Rock and, you know, you'll be told that you can't because we're protecting uh, the officials. These are government officials that are coming from when they're not visitors, uh, especially Dr. Jill Biden. She's been here three times already. Into you graduation, uh, she did the commencement. She was in Tubus City a couple of years ago and now it's First Lady coming. Uh, being a government official, we voted for these individuals and now they're here. And so we will welcome them on behalf of the Navajo people. But let me just also say that we are going to be live streaming these. You probably have a better view if you watch all the live stream. The First Lady, Dr. Jill Biden will be meeting with our First Lady Navajo Nation, uh, uh, for Philia Nez and also, uh, Second Lady, uh, Dottie Elizer and some women. I know there's a lot of requests, uh, saying that we want to be, you know, we want to be able to get a variety of topics. And we can't just open it all up to everyone because of these very strict protocols. So I just ask for your, um, your patience and you're also your, your con, uh, consideration uh, on these measures, you know, I mean, we want to make sure that, uh, everyone is safe. And so she'll be visiting here on Navajo, a school, um, at the T O T Medical Center. Um, uh, on Friday, there's a vaccination drive. So if you haven't get vaccinated and, you know, that's available to you at the T O T Medical Center on, um, Friday. And she'll witness that. She wants to know how you all did, Navajo people, on keeping these numbers low. And as you heard me many times, I always say that, uh, the Navajo people have really stepped up and it's because of you. It's because of each and every one of you following through these protocols. Many of you made commitments on social media, on the comments. Say, I commit to continue to follow these protocols and it's because of the Navajo people. Of course you'll get naysayers out there. Uh, some people, uh, say, well, I'm not going to follow through because I already caught the virus. They're thinking of themselves, you know, they're not thinking of others. Uh, and so, yeah, you can still catch the virus. So you need to keep that in line. So keep, keep out, uh, we'll have a press release with social media, live stream of all these events that are happening. So we can, uh, bring it into your home so you can see the visits. Uh, Vice President and I will be meeting with the council as well, with the, uh, our cabinet members, uh, with, uh, the First Lady as well to represent, uh, the Navajo people. CDC guidelines are to be followed, the White House guidelines as well. So that'll end my report. I know I didn't say too much in Navajo. I asked for your, uh, translation, uh, to our elderly. Just want to get this, uh, um, update quickly and because there's a, a Dr. Jill Jim ready to do an update as well as Captain Johnson, IHS, Dr. Burge from, uh, uh, Tubus City Regional Healthcare Corporation, Dr. Profilia Fowler and, and others that are going to give you an update of what's happening here on the Navajo Nation with the public health emergency. So take care of yourself. God bless you. And let me turn the time over to our Vice President, uh, Byron Lizer. Thank you all.
Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. President. Um, appreciate your leadership. Thank you for all those updates. Uh, it is a great time, very exciting time. So uh, the same, uh, you may see my locale has changed. Uh, I am in Shiprock, New Mexico at our Navo Northern Navo Medical Center here where they're, uh, appreciating their employees. And so they're demobilizing the incident command. And, uh, it's, it's a, it's symbolic, but, uh, you know, it's things that you do and, uh, the leadership here has been great that we've been here several times. We appreciate Gabe Smart and everything that he does coordinating and, uh, everybody on down from the administrators to, uh, you know, the actual, we appreciate them, uh, appreciate their sacrifice, appreciate all of their toil and their great care for our indigenous citizens. And so, uh, again, tomorrow's kind of culminating, uh, in a little bit, right? There's still, uh, all those hands that laid, uh, their, their, their hands, their strong hands, their skilled hands, their, um, labored hands to work, uh, towards this fight and mitigation of COVID nineteen here in the Shiprock area. And so again, today, uh, we're also going to hopefully chime in with Joe Tohane. He's here with his dancers. And, uh, maybe he could do a little quick shout out to all of, uh, and just a real quick update too. Today is a happy, um, Navajo Nation, uh, Administrator Professionals Day. So all of you administrators, all the employees of the Navajo Nation and all those that are helping even in the health facilities, uh, nonprofit organizations, our schools, public, private, and our chapter houses, uh, just on down the, the, you know, several thousand, probably twenty, over twenty thousand workers, maybe probably more. Actually you're right. Uh, I'm, it is more. It's probably up to thirty thousand, uh, uh, I'll, we'll just call them professionals, right? And so a shout out to them on Navajo Nation Administrative Professionals Day. So and then also a real quick update tomorrow or Friday is going to be Earth Day, right? And they're still observing that with, uh, a lot of protocols in place to help prevent, mitigate and prevent the sprint of the virus here. But you know, as you know, a lot of trash, people are dumping trash illegally everywhere. And so it's going to be a great day to just clean up Mother Earth here and, uh, it's going to be good, you know, we, we need to, um, um, lead those, but also, uh, exercise in a social distancing, masking up, you know, gloves, proper sanitization of everything and it's going to be good. But, uh, if you can go to the website, uh, Navajo Department of Health and they would see the COVID's, uh, safety practices for guidelines for community trash pickup on Earth Day, which is April twenty second, two thousand twenty one. So again, as I always do, I appreciate you for chiming in with us here and then I'll introduce Dr. Jill Jim here real shortly, but quickly my updates here and, uh, that would also explain my new locale here to honor the employees of Navajo Northern Navo Medical Center here. So, uh, So it's a great day. It's good. Um, so the news here in the United States, Operation Warp Speed has been successful. So we have two administrations to appreciate here. The Trump administration who set it out and made those uh great claims. And we've seen it roll out and the Biden Harris administration as well under their watch. It is continuing to roll out at great success. So the Navajo Nation is a part of that success. Appreciate President Jonathan Nez's great leadership and all of our health professionals, our I H S, our six thirty eights and every facility here on the Navajo Nation and our chapters too, everybody played a significant part. So uh, we appreciate the team effort that helped the vaccine rollout here. Pfizer, the Moderna, and then the Johnson Johnson, which has since been placed on hold. But leadership helps guide these and make these decisions. And uh, the great rollout is because I think of how hard the COVID-19 has hit the Navajo Nation. And you know, again, it's great, the success, the dedication on that rollout is great. And now we've attracted the presence of the First Lady of the United States, Dr. Jill Biden, who's here to look at that and tour some facilities. And also because she's a doctor of education, took out one of the B I E schools there in Hunter's Point, Arizona. So it's a great thing, it's a great time. We as leaders have the great ability now. We have the uh, the world on our doorsteps peering in, whether it be social media, whether it be news, uh, the media here and, you know, the like. What can we as leaders parlay this into? Obviously, of course, your prayers is helping us stay strong and advance everything that we could talk about with the administration. And we've always been doing that, even since the Trump administration. Uh, there was great momentum started and great momentum continues in the Biden Harris. And so again, the Navajo Nation and Indian country is being recognized. Uh, and we're trying to maintain a positive posture in all that leadership here. So appreciate you all. Thank you for your prayers. Yeah. Um, in the news again, President Biden announced on April nineteenth, two thousand twenty one, every American is eligible to receive COVID-19 vaccine. So the rollout of it, you know, uh, has been tremendous. And so we appreciate that being available now to every citizen in these United States. President Trump announced that Americans will get the vaccine by April twenty twenty one. On September twenty eighth, twenty twenty, he made that announcement and we see it again rolling out. So Operation Warp Speed is and has been successful very much. So daily COVID-19 vaccinations are up about two point five million and rising. New cases, hospitalization and deaths have fallen. And so then President Nez has commended you all for helping us push back on COVID-19. And then credit to our healthcare experts and our workers for making Operation Warp Speed a successful mission. Again, President and I, we've been in our health facilities. We've been there when they're putting administering the, the needles into the arms of our citizens. And we, we just thank our health professionals. Again, from the respiratory techs to the nurses, the R Ns, the B S Ns, the L P Ns, that's been all hands on deck and our doctors and, and the frontline responders, our ambulance drivers and our flight nurses, on and on. Again, everybody is to be commended and we appreciate their sacrifice again and their dedication. So President and I, we take at all opportunities that we can to make sure that they are much appreciated. And we do appreciate our health professionals very, very, very much. So thanks again to all of them. So and in the short while here, we'll be giving those workers here, Employee Appreciation Day here at Northern Navo Medical Center in Shiprock, New Mexico. They'll be just commended. We appreciate them as well. We love them as well. Uh, so and we'll continue to pray for them as well. So Arizona news real quick and then um priming Dr. Jill. What's that, Jill Biden? JT, you put that in my mind. So um, on Monday, April nineteenth, two thousand twenty one, Arizona Governor Doug Ducey issued an executive order banning vaccine passports in Arizona. That's just the latest news. Uh, this executive order would prevent state and local governments from requiring Arizonans to provide their COVID-19 vaccination uh status either or enter an area or receive something. So uh, you got there, we're just giving updates here. Governor Ducey also rescinded his July twenty third requirement that all school districts must develop and implement a policy to require face coverings, such as masks or shields. Now, students and teachers at Arizona schools are no longer required to be required by the state to wear masks. And so here again, on the, just drawing the distinction, a comparative here, uh comparative narrative here on the Navajo Nation, we still require all those things. And so uh, just you are fully informed. Uh, positive cases, Arizona, eight hundred and fifty-five thousand, eight hundred and four total since last March with six hundred and forty-nine in new cases. Uh, doing a deeper drill down, dive into Apache County, total positive cases, eleven thousand two hundred and seventy-six with two new cases. So good job Apache County, Navajo County, sixteen thousand and sixty-six with six additional new cases as of yesterday. Uh, Coconino County, seventeen thousand five hundred and forty-three with twenty-nine new cases. So please continue to be safe out there. Uh, watch your area, be vigilant and we'll continue to get out of this virus here and exit it, right? That's all we're praying for. And again, continue to pray and watch out for those around you, your loved ones and your community as well. Uh, New Mexico, one hundred and ninety-five thousand six hundred and fifteen total cases this past year with a hundred and sixty-one new cases. San Juan County in northwest corner of New Mexico, fourteen thousand one hundred and fifty-nine with eighteen new cases to report. And Gallup McKinley County rounding out the counties that touch Navajo on in New Mexico, uh, twelve thousand one hundred and ninety-six total positive cases the past year with five new cases. And rounding out the three states in our tri-state region, Utah. A little quick news, Utah Governor Spencer Cox and Lieutenant Governor Deirdre Henderson are scheduled to provide a COVID-19 pandemic at their weekly news conference there at eleven A M. Tomorrow, if you're so inclined, please tune in there for our southeastern uh Navajo Nation residents of Utah. Um, and then also uh, they have three hundred and ninety-three, two hundred and seventy-two reporting of total cases this past year of COVID-19 and three hundred and fifteen new cases to report as of yesterday. So again, our, it looks like our numbers have been great there in San Juan County on Navajo there. Total positive cases, one thousand eight hundred and seventy. So that number hasn't really changed much in the last several weeks that we've been reporting. And our own Utah Navo Health System, one thousand and eighty-nine total positive cases in this year. And so again, today is Navajo Nation Administrative Professionals Day. Shout out to you, all of our thirty, forty thousand plus workers here on the Navajo Nation. Continue to be safe. President Jonathan Nez and I, we give you our prayers, we give you a shout out, we give you our prayers and we're all in this together. So we appreciate you, little atta boy, atta girl. And thanks a million for all that you do. And then lastly, uh, Friday announcement is Earth Day. So if you're going out and picking up trash, do so. Limit your groups to ten or less. Practice social distancing. Wash your hands regularly, wear your uh P P Es, your bright shiny light and green or yellow or orange vest here. Stay safe on the roads and whenever you can, uh, you know, uh, just keeping uh vigilantly monitoring everybody around you, you know? Hopefully, and it is, it is a, I guess, uh, allergy season. So hopefully when you're out there, allergies don't act up too much on you, but you may wanna take some medication to help you um guide and steer clear of that, you know? Cause some of these symptoms mimic COVID-19, so don't get alarmed. But yeah, again, continue to be safe out there. Watch your kids, anybody helping you of, you know, younger age. Hopefully, uh, we'll have helpers and chaperones out there as we clean up our land here. And so again, we're all in this together. Appreciate President Jonathan Nez's exemplary leadership in this fight against COVID-19. And we look for more great news to come, great reporting and prayerful for a good report. Prayer that our, our Creator God has delivered us from this. We pray for the land and all the citizens therein. So God bless you. Thank you all for chiming in here. This is Vice President signing off at the Navajo Northern Medical Center here, where we're here to honor all the employees on Employee Appreciation Day as they demobilize their Incident Command Center. So again, thank you all. We love you, continue to pray for you and Shalom. So now, Dr. Jill Jim, our Executive Director of our Navajo Department of Health. Take it away, Doctor.
Thank you, Vice President, for all your kind words and President Nez as well. So they answer our phones, they help us make sure our office functions. So you might be on your lunch break or listening to us here from the, um, from here from Window Rock at the central office. So I just want to thank everyone and um all the reminders that our tribal leader does provide for us every day. Um, it's important to keep our trash, um, not to accumulate. And we're lucky that our numbers are this low right now. So we just need to make sure that we conduct some of these activities very safely out there. So just know that um, the House Command Center provided some guidance, even though you're not a tribal program that will be out there safely picking up trash. We encourage all of those um individuals volunteering to pick up trash on Earth Day. Um, so that way we can kind of keep some um guidance on the um amount of people out there and also staying within the guidelines. So there are guidelines. So if you're out there, I know I've seen some stuff on Facebook uh regarding groups coming together to pick up trash, but just know there are specific guidelines. We don't want some sort of um bad event to come out from that. And some things in the guideline mainly looks at social distancing, going in groups of ten, making sure there is prepackaged water and food available if you're gonna give them snacks. Um, no sort of like potluck kind of deal or serving. So making sure that you have prepackaged food for individuals to make sure they are hydrated, that they have a hat or a cap or sunscreen, things like that are um in the guidelines. Also being cautious around the um traffic, being mindful of that, wearing a vest that's visible as well. And so just to let everyone know, we'll have that on the webpage. And I know that President's Office usually shares information. So um, I hope, he'll probably share that guidelines on, on Facebook as well. So safety is very important around this time, but we also know that we are here to um keep our land clean as well. So not deep needle for that, um, for all of those that will be out there, um, helping on uh celebrate Earth Day, Earth Day as well. So in regards to reminders of other things that were mentioned, yes, we will be transitioning into a new color and we will be making sure there are guidelines for certain areas that haven't been open. There's some new um suggestions, as President mentioned, like the parks as well. So we do have guidelines for them and then other um sectors. Um, for example, the zoo um would be another option to make sure there's guidelines for the, the, and just to make sure that we all are practicing safe precautions. So um, we usually don't um go into the next phase really hastily. So we're just gonna make sure that um all of the items are, our sectors are in place. So just know that you all are doing a good job. Um, the number one prevention at this time and number two is um basically, number one is continuing to wear your mask, even though if, if you are vaccinated or not and avoiding large gatherings or medium sized gatherings is probably the next second recommendation. We are still in a cell shelter in place. There are still guidelines around the amount of people um that are out there. And we're not, we advise that they are being done safely. Um, if you don't need to gather, if you don't need to do all of those um kind of risky um celebrations, I'm pleased that you're discretion to make those decisions so that you risk, reduce your risk of transmission of getting COVID. Uh, COVID has not gone away, it's still here. So just be mindful of their recommendation is in these public health emergency orders. Um, so and then the last thing that will help a lot of what we're mentioning is this basically the where um understanding if you are sick, continue to just make sure that you get tested. It's also very important to still get tested, even though um you might think it's an allergy or something else. I know it's allergy season, so just know that you can reduce your risk by also following other items. We do also have reports of additional variants that have been detected across the Navajo Nation. So the UK and California variants still do exist. So um, just to let you know, um, take all the, um, all the same precautions that you need to in order to um reduce your risk of transmission as well. So I'm, I'm just gonna be brief and I know that Dr. Fowler will do a good job summarizing some of these recommendations at the end. Um, so um, I always am grateful for Dr. Fowler for translating some of these. So I'm gonna go ahead and rely on her um to summarize some of these larger, uh, major points that we're doing today and to summarize this. So for all that are listening, I just once again want to say thank you. And um, I will now hand over time to Captain Brian Johnson. He's with the Navajo Area Indian Health Service. So um, take it away, Brian.
Thank you, Dr. Jim. A good afternoon, everyone, or almost afternoon anyway. This is uh Captain Brian Johnson. I uh serve as the Acting Deputy Area Director for the Navajo Area Indian Health Service in St. Michael's, Arizona. And I just wanna say thank you again uh for the opportunity to be on the Facebook Live session. And every time that I get on one of these sessions, I always learn something new from our colleagues and from uh President Nez, Dr. Jim, Vice President and others. Um, it's just uh of some of the things going on in the communities and as well as nationally in our nation as well. Um, we do continue, as, as President Nez mentioned during his time on this session, we do continue to uh work together and, and have meetings, have calls just to go over various important aspects of COVID-19 status and looking back at where we've been and where we, where we're headed. So um, that's been a tremendous of us working together. Um, I would like to also mention that as a part of this, we continue to um, to follow the gating measures despite the fact that the number of our cases of COVID-19, when we look at new incidents or incidents of COVID-19, we do see that the number of cases have, have, especially if we look back year ago, um, that the number of cases have come down dramatically. It's taken a long time. It's taken a lot of work, it's taken a lot of participation by the Navajo Nation, Navajo public in terms of doing the right things and, and continue to just really say we, we appreciate you for, for certainly working and with leadership and listening to leadership across the Navajo Nation. I think folks here have done an outstanding job. And I think it's something to be truly proud of. We, we still see and, and many of you out there in the public may have seen some of the um media sessions, whether it be with CNN or NBC, National News or, or others, or President Nez has been asked to share exactly how did Navajo Nation do so well? Knowing that, uh, as we talked about, we were hit very hard in this particular area. However, we're resilient as a team, as a people. Um, it, it was a really incredible recovery from the, the high level of infection. So I just wanna encourage people to, to know that initially all nations look to as certainly a prime example all best to uh Zeus and uh COVID-19 and working with the public. I just wanna reiterate that um we have been in conversation as, has been mentioned on this particular session. And we are looking for that transition from orange phase to the yellow phase. Six and Public Health Emergency Order will be forthcoming from uh Navajo Nation Department of Health. Dr. Jill Jim has certainly been Dr. Jill Jim has certainly been working in concert with President Nez over the last many months uh in issuing the various emergency orders and and it's a positive thing when we see uh the number or the the color code change from orange to yellow uh meaning that we're able to reduce some of the restrictions we'll still have some in place um but these things have been discussed very openly with with Navajo Nation leadership in terms of making the best decisions on how to move forward again we've done a very very good outstanding job public here on Navajo Nation has done an outstanding job to make sure that we do things in a very smartly that we do it in a smart way so we continue to look for opportunities uh to to reduce the restrictions while also balancing the protection of action people so um again positive it's it's very good news that the number of new cases have been less than ten cases per day over over the last several days and um we hope that that certainly that trend continues but I I do want to caution folks that we when we have in in recent weeks had bumps increases uh in terms of the number of cases we we have seen that those can and are uh be associated with uh group get togethers and it's very important we we continue to uh recommend to the public to be extremely cautious and there's a reason that the um the rule is put in place for ten or fewer people gathering and that is because anytime we have a group of folks getting together we do see an increase in risk in terms of disease transmission so uh please continue and and you know to follow the public health emergency orders uh really look and and listen at at what those really mean because there's a lot of thought that goes into those and and the thought involves um physicians medical providers who are actively treating and and actively monitoring the situation across Navajo Nation in terms in terms of public health so these things are not taken lightly any of those conversations involve in-depth discussions looking at the numbers looking not only locally but regionally nationally internationally to understand what others went through and and how can we avoid learning from others and using best practices so um very very important and I think that the trend and how things have worked here across Navajo Nation has been very very helpful uh I also wanted to mention that uh we continue to do covid nineteen testing across the Navajo Nation and um it's very important for us to understand that uh we we do testing uh you know number one to identify individuals who are positive and to quickly uh work with them to isolate to get them treatment and to protect the broader public so testing continues to be certainly an important strategy for us and um if you have any questions about that please feel free to to reach out to your local health facility that you frequent and and they can provide you information on how to get tested easiest way to do that and will help schedule you or at least provide direction on on work to report testing done and um again it was mentioned that this is allergy season and that is true and and we have had over the uh last year on several occasions I've had I've known of folks who thought that they were experiencing allergies and in turn in in reality they they were tested and they did come back positive so if you don't assume uh you're dealing with allergies uh the symptoms can be somewhat consistent with covid so I just recommend again if if you have any question about whether or not uh been exposed whether or not you you could potentially be tested it's always safest to to go ahead and get tested and that helps us understand where covid is actively in our populations and it also helps us understand where it's going so um again continue to suggest that um it was also mentioned we we continue to have contact tracers in place and anytime we have a case a positive case those contact tracers reach out to anyone that they contact with certain over a certain timeframe to make sure that folks are aware that they may have been exposed and then also just to work with them in terms of isolation or getting tested so those are extremely uh important to have the contact tracing team I want to say thank you to those across Navajo Nation for the work they've done on that because that is the point the control point of these infections uh from a public health perspective really have to have those contact tracers in place and they have to work quickly when they're notified of any cases um we you know we continue to monitor our local neighboring jurisdictions and it was mentioned again about Colorado and Colorado right now is a fairly high risk of covid transmission throughout the state uh certain counties of course within the state of Colorado uh you know have a higher risk and some of those do some of those counties do uh are or are right adjacent to Mexico along the northern Mexico so it's important to understand that there are some hot areas in terms of covid nineteen transmission that if you're gonna be traveling in a local region as you be aware that is uh out there and hopefully it will calm down over time but we really uh nationally we really see uh tremendous amount of activity uh up well up north in Minnesota and Michigan and over to the northeast in terms of Pennsylvania um and West Virginia I also noticed that Florida uh has a fairly high uh risk uh presently as well so um those are just some of the states uh also others include Tennessee Illinois uh also the Midwest towards the Midwest but um so so just keep in mind mind that you know although we're doing well here on Navajo Nation there are still challenges with covid nineteen across and we as we've seen during our waves things can change fairly quickly in terms of uh the number of infections if we're not doing our due diligence if we're not taking the preventive measures then uh it can certainly create upticks or increases in the cases and we and we certainly don't want to find ourselves back where we've been so we've learned a lot we know what works you know we just ask the public to please keep uh keep your vigilance uh up and uh continue and uh following those measures and again uh you know we talk a little bit about um covid nineteen vaccine and again we have a slogan that's referred to as you know let's reach community immunity protect yourself protect your family and protect your elders and that's so important that we all continue if you you know to get to get covid nineteen vaccinations it's uh very important in order to uh troll this um this virus um we we hope that if there's anyone out there that has yet to that to not get uh one of the vaccines uh please do we know uh that there was a halt to the Johnson and Johnson vaccine in terms of administering that and however that does not hamper or prevent us from continuing on with Moderna and Pfizer vaccines and um and those continue to be extremely safe and effective so uh thank you for what you can do locally in terms of continuing to increase those those vaccine beats and numbers I also just want to mention you know going back to the month of March we commented multiple times that we were trying to uh in terms of the Indian Health Service and tribal communities across the United States we were trying to reach a um a a over a million doses of vaccine and I just want to say that we although we didn't hit our initial objective which was to have that done by March thirty one we we did in fact uh reach the one million doses of of administered vaccine in entry across the Indian healthcare system which is very exciting and certainly just want to say thanks a million to uh all of the natives across the Indian healthcare system because it was so that this is this is a great achievement uh that others have perhaps have not seen in their jurisdictions um again we we know that the covid nineteen variants and the 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 viruses that have mutated uh we do have those in our area and um through and and we know that because we uh do the covid nineteen testing as I mentioned earlier and by um having samples uh looked at specifically for those variants we're able to understand which exact type of covid nineteen is is uh local and infecting people and so again it helps us educate one another and making sure that we're doing the right things again in terms of reducing exposures and reducing the risk uh finally I I do want to mention that um one of the one of the exciting things that's happened more recently is in the last week or so is is the funding with the American Rescue Plan and um additional funding as you know funding throughout this pandemic has been provided um additional funding is uh coming through the American Rescue Plan which was approved by Congress and um it's it funds additional increases in to support increased vaccinations it supports detecting and diagnosing and monitoring and and mitigating covid nineteen infections and it also helps you know when we look at our healthcare facilities across the Navajo area we know that um we we know that it's we've had to close down clinics and and I know that's been a burden for many of the people whenever you're so used to having clinics open in our hospitals and our health centers yet we had to take this action to close down certain clinics um elective clinics so that we would not uh help propagate or contribute to the transmission of the and um we know that that in turn resulted in a loss of revenue a loss of funding for our health facilities whether they're IHS managed or tribally managed and that certainly impacts us uh it going into the future so we're very fortunate that the American Rescue Plan does identify um funding to replace some of those lost some of that lost revenue that occurred during the pandemic and certainly thankful for that for that funding um I just uh again want to say uh thank you to everyone continue to get those uh covid nineteen vaccinations and continue to wash your hands uh social distance and wear your masks and we we again we've been educated over time we've really learned what works and what doesn't and I we know that these preventive uh steps do uh work for us and and as a final final note I just want to mention I know President Nez mentioned hantavirus prevention and it is true and it's very true uh hantavirus is what we refer to as endemic or it's basically naturally occurring in our area uh most of us have heard or know of hantavirus and it's that time of year that we see exposures happen of from hantavirus and there are things that you can do as well such as wearing a mask wearing protective goggles if you're cleaning up rodent droppings or rodent urine um be sure that you are disinfecting those before you do the cleanup and there are guidelines available locally at your healthcare facility also available on the internet at at cdc.gov and other locations so please take that into consideration as well we want to make sure no one's exposed to hantavirus as well so um at this point I'm going to go ahead and transition to uh Dr. Burridge who uh works with the Tuba City Regional Healthcare Corporation in Tuba City and want to thank her for being on the on the call and she's gonna go over some gating metrics some epidemiological data some uh on cases and testing uh contact tracing and vaccines and um and then at the end of this uh Dr. Burridge will hand off to Dr. Fowler for to help interpret some of the information shared here today so uh Dr. Burridge I'm turning it over to you thank you
Great, thank you Dr. Johnson and thank you President and Dr. Jim and so I'm going to share the um gating metrics on which you guys have seen in past weeks um so as we um you heard earlier this morning we have been in yellow-orange um which is here in the center and we'll be moving to level yellow which is moderate community spread and moderate disease risk and we're gonna talk through each of these categories in terms of the number of new cases the infection rate and our testing capacity and um percent positivity our public health capacity and our healthcare hospital capacity as well as vaccine data um for each of these things to sort of explain why we are meeting criteria for level yellow so this is the graph that you've seen before in terms of the number of cases and this is since the beginning of the new year twenty twenty one so we're in the middle of our big surge recently and we've come down nicely last week we commented that we were concerned about the um sort of a slight increase in cases here um but that has leveled out and come down a little bit over the past week um and this data is through April fifteenth which is last Thursday um so it's leveled off and come down a little bit um which is good I'm looking below here this is the RT curve or the transmission per positive case um and on average that is just below one over the past uh week um so showing that less than one person is being infected for every new case of covid which is what we want to see the information on the right here shows um the trends by each facility as well as the number of new cases per hundred thousand and the new cases over seven days so for Navajo Nation as a whole there have been sixty nine new cases over the past seven days um and um as a whole that's thirty three per hundred thousand over that seven day period so looking at the map level data so at the top here we can see the four corner states um and as has been discussed the Colorado state is in the darker color which means there is higher incidence or higher number of new cases per hundred thousand over the past seven days I also want to reiterate that there are a number of states across the country particularly in the northeast and Midwest that are seeing spikes in cases uh Michigan Pennsylvania um and others that have been mentioned um and so we're keeping an eye on that data as well but certainly Colorado since it's right at our border also globally want to mention and this was mentioned before as well um but and there are a number of countries around the world that are seeing increasing cases India Brazil some um countries in Europe um but many around the world um are spiking as well um and some are sort of coming down everyone's in their own pattern but we are keeping an eye on that so looking at our service unit um there are two that are darker again with more trend more cases per hundred thousand so Crown Point and Gallup are in the darker gray um and that's hopefully in the center there um so looking at this graph below this is looking at the chapters there are eleven chapters that are in this darker gray color um and again those are ones that are keeping an eye on in terms of more cases in the past seven days per hundred thousand so looking at our testing volume and our percent positivity so the blue graph here shows the number of tests um per day across Navajo Nation um this had come down after the surge and was has been going up a little bit um but as you can see from the orange line the percent positivity um has come down um and was three point three um this last day and so we're keeping an eye on that it's below five percent um which is what we want to see again um we can see percent positivity by site overall generally at or below five percent per site um and then looking also at cumulative testing so the number of um tests um overall um by month and that again our testing numbers are strong and rising but we as people have mentioned we want to keep our testing um high so anyone who has any concerns should be tested certainly anyone with any symptoms we want them to be tested right away um and then we ask contacts to be tested as well these graphs show our hospital capacities on the left this is overall bed capacity and on the right this is ICU bed um capacity or occupancy um so for both um we see that we are below our eighty percent capacity metric on the right here for the ICU bed occupancy um it does show that I just facilities are high and I think that is a data um question so we do actually have ICU bed capacity and we're continuing to monitor both of those looking at our public health capacity so this is looking at our contact tracing teams across the different sites this orange line here represents um the goal of five contact tracers per new daily case um and this you can see across all the sites essentially is meeting that goal I'm looking at the chart here we also see similar information um and at the bottom Navajo Nation overall there are a hundred and sixty three almost a hundred and sixty four contact tracers um which makes the ratio of sixteen contact tracers per new case which is great um so we do have strong contact tracing and that has been hugely successful in terms of decreasing spread of cases um and that is um working across all the different sites Um, and that is um, working across all the different sites. And then lastly, um, vaccine data, and so Doc, um, President Nez had mentioned this information. And we are constantly sort of looking to update this information, um, and share as much information as possible. So overall, um, of all of the um, our eligible population, so anyone over age sixteen, um, fifty percent have been fully vaccinated. Um, looking at uh, our percent of total user population, that number is a little bit lower because that includes kids that are not yet eligible for vaccination, and that's at thirty-eight percent. Um, we do hope that we'll be able to vaccinate twelve sixteen-year-olds in the coming month. Um, once we have EUA approval, um, hopefully that'll be uh, May or June for um, both the Pfizer and Moderna vaccines. But we are on hold for that and hope to be able to vaccinate those kids soon. Um, and these numbers to the left here show um, the numbers of people that are initiating vaccination. So maybe not have received both doses, but have started their vaccination. So for eligible population over age sixteen, that's sixty-two percent, and then for all users, it's forty-eight percent. And below here, we see um, by site, um, if you hover, you can see the number of people that have been fully vaccinated um, and the number that initiate vaccination. Um, and we are again, continually updating these numbers, um, and encouraging vaccination across all the sites, as has been mentioned. Um, the Pfizer, Moderna vaccines are available at all sites. Um, they've been giving to millions and millions of people and are safe and very effective in terms of preventing um, severe illness and death and preventing spread in our communities. So just reiterate, everyone else who has said, um, encourage people to get vaccinated. And you know, certainly want to reiterate that, um, please encourage family members, household members, friends, um, to get vaccinated as well. So I will um, pause there and pass it back to Dr. Fowler, um, and thank you, everyone, for your attention.
Thank you, Dr. Burridge and that uh, Captain Johnson, Dr. Jim, President, Vice President, Yehat. Thank you for your presentation. I know it's a bad thing, and I need to go. I could add, and I did, and I believe I had to. I need you to, but I could, and I, yeah, and then I need to, but I have to. I could, but I can't, and I need to.